Well, good afternoon and welcome to a special meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Allen County Public Library. I will ask the Secretary to call the roll.
Certainly. Jim?
Present.
Ken?
Present.
Martin?
Present.
Ben?
Present.
Okay. Sharon?
Present.
We have six present. One on the way. Okay. The first item of business, and the only item of business, is the adoption of the agenda. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second. All those in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
And opposed by nay. A few housekeeping items. There is a microphone right behind that contraption that stands up that looks like a telescope for public comment. Those individuals here that wish to comment publicly on the subject at hand are asked to sign up on the sign-up sheet, which is right behind me, and please keep your comments to a couple minutes if you don't mind. In addition to that, we will be receiving comments via the Internet. So with that, let me welcome everybody to this special meeting and begin with a few preparatory remarks. Rosa Salter's article in today's Journal Gazette, Rose, I read it, region report, region sees fast growth, population gain of .89 percent, best in the Great Lakes area. Fort Wayne metro area grew fastest of any of the Great Lakes region in 2020, a report based on federal census figures says. That's timely in light of the reason that we've called this special session of the Board this afternoon. Today marks another milestone in an ongoing process years in the making, for in 2017, the Board adopted a strategic plan which included library as place as a focus area. The facilities master plan that we're in the process of developing represents the ongoing commitment to achieving the goals and outcomes as adopted in that plan. We understand the importance of each neighborhood places on its local branch, and as such, each library building should reflect the same level of services offered within. The recommendations in the master plan, which will shortly be delivered by the Bostwick Design Partnership, will outline a path reflecting the growth that we're experiencing in Allen County, as referenced in the news article in the 21st century. Community patrons and staff have already provided invaluable input that has shaped this initial, and I underscore initial, plan. Today's presentation is to share the consultants' findings and recommendations, as well as the options, after which, library staff will outline ways that community residents can share their reactions and their suggestions. This is a living document. We are a work in progress, and only with your involvement can we better understand how our library can meet the demands of the future and the expectations that you, our patrons, hold. So thank you all for joining us, whether in person or on the television, and thanks in advance for your participation. Susan?
Thank you, Ben, and I want to thank our community members who are here with us today and our media, and also everybody watching from home. Yesterday, I received an email from a patron. The email read, "Just wanted to say thank you to the library and everyone who works there for helping to make the strangeness of these pandemic times a little easier to deal with. How would we manage without books for an escape, for information, and for entertainment? These times have amplified the importance of ACPL, its books and other offerings, and its buildings to the community. We mean many things to many people. Each day, patrons come to find a story, their own story, in their library. All these stories are different. It can be a book they stumble upon browsing that can offer temporary escapism during a stressful time. It can be a quiet place with strong Wi-Fi that they can use to complete work or school assignments. It can be a magical destination, where a young child begins to fall in love with reading. It can be a place where someone experiences art, listens to live music, or discovers their ancestors. It can be a place where people gather in a meeting or are connected to important health and social services. And on a day like today, it can be a warm, friendly place to sit and read on a cold day." What all these stories have in common is that they depend on welcoming, inviting, well-furnished, and well-maintained library buildings. Our buildings are well-used and they're well-loved, and we want to make sure they continue to meet patron needs for today and for the future. With Allen County ranking in the top 25 percent of metro areas, we need to make sure our buildings are keeping up and responding to community growth. And that's why we have enlisted the help of Rick Ortmeier of Bostwick Design Partnership and library consultant June Garcia to assess the current conditions of our buildings. Are our libraries best equipped to support the services we provide now and what our patrons want us to provide in the future? After months of site visits, staff and patron surveys, focus groups, and community conversations, we are so excited to share our consultants' findings and recommendations in this draft facility master plan. Before I turn it over to Rick and June, there are some important folks I want to thank. First of all, I want to thank you, the community, because this summer, you completed our survey. You attended focus groups. You participated in community conversations. Thank you for your feedback and for your thoughts about the library, and please know there will be many more opportunities for you to participate. I also want to thank our ACPL Board of Trustees with a special shout-out to our Capital Projects Committee Chair Marty Seifert, Ben Eisbart, and Kent Councilman. It's important to remember that all of our trustees are volunteers, serving their community. They give many, many hours, particularly of late, many hours, of their time, out of love for their library. Our ACPL staff open their work homes to our consultants, and they have been incredibly generous with their time, their observations, and their feedback. They know their libraries, and they know their communities, and they are true advocates for their patrons. This process has truly been a collaborative effort among staff, but I would like to acknowledge a few key people. Chief of Public Service Operations, Kim Bowlen, over there, has been the staff lead on the facility master plan process, which is a tremendous responsibility on top of an already demanding job. Her years of experience with facility management and building projects have proven invaluable, and I am grateful for her leadership. I also want to thank our maintenance manager, Jake Ullam. Jake is a name that patrons may not immediately recognize, but I promise you, you would notice his absence. He and his team keep our facilities running safely and smoothly, and they know our buildings like the back of their hand. I also want to express my appreciation to Director of Communications, Stephanie Smith. Throughout this process, our aim was transparency, engagement from staff and patrons, and clarity in communication. I believe we have exceeded in that due to her hard work in keeping everyone informed, and we are committed to continuing that. Finally, let me thank and reintroduce our consultants, Rick Ortmeier from Bostwick Design Partnership, and June Garcia, library consultant. They have become a part of our extended library family, and I am so excited for all of you to hear what they have to share this afternoon.
Thank you so much, Susan, and the Board. We're going to get started with just a brief overview of the agenda. We're going to make a brief introduction of the consult teams. We're going to talk about the purpose, which reflects a bit of what we just heard. We're going to talk about the process we underwent to get to this point. We're going to spend most of our time today talking about Agenda Items Four, Five, and Six, and review the current conditions of the facilities. We're going to talk about the recommendations and the options around those recommendations, and then the fiscal implications of those recommendations. And then we're going to talk about next steps. Thank you. So, my name is Rick Ortmeier. I'm an architect, based in Cleveland, Ohio, and 30 years of experience. Twenty-five of those years have been in service of public library programming and planning. Proud to have worked on over 80 libraries in my career across 13 states, all but a handful of which are between Iowa, Pennsylvania, and the Upper Midwest, all the states in the country. And my colleague, who is not here with us, but is here virtually, June Garcia.
Good afternoon. My name is June Garcia. I'm based in Denver, Colorado. I'm a public librarian with over five decades of experience, beginning as a reference librarian, a branch manager, a head of branches for the Phoenix Public Library, director in San Antonio during their massive building program, during which we expanded, renovated, or replaced all 18 of our branches, and built the new central library in six years. Subsequently, I became head of computer company based here in Denver, and for the past 20 years, have been a library consultant, working with libraries like yours all over the country and some international work. Back to you, Rick.
Thank you. I would also like to introduce Carson Block, who is not on this presentation today, but has been instrumental helping us, is another Colorado-based consultant. He started his career 17 years working within the library system before he started his consultancy in a unique and much-needed area of library consultancy around technology. So that experience working in the public library side directly allows him to be grounded in the real world while he can help us be visionary about our future around technology. So we'll talk about the purpose, and I think it's echoing a bit of what Susan and Ben already mentioned. And these are pieces from the actual request for proposals that June and I responded to. And this is consistent with the priorities of transparency, and also in service of the goal of libraries as place, from the library strategic plan. And I want to reiterate, this plan focuses on facilities and public-facing aspects of the facilities as well. We'll talk about that as we move forward. But the intent is for us to assess how the system works today and how we may recommend possible changes that would reconfigure, expand, or replace libraries in order to improve the equity of access and the equity of quality across all of Allen County, so residents are served appropriately over the next 10 years. Talk a little bit about the influences that lead up to a library master plan like this. June?
Sure. When you ask someone what comes to mind when you say "public library," almost everyone will say "books." And then, if they think about it for a bit more, they might mention some other things as well. But it's books that most people would say and most people think of when they think of a library. And frankly, it's what they expect the library to have. Throughout this process, we and the staff have thought about the future of the library, your existing facilities, and future facilities, and we've done that always, keeping in mind the critical importance of books. We're also aware that technology has changed how some services are delivered, and the subsequent impact that those changes have had on library buildings. I mentioned that I have over five decades of library experience. When I began my career as a reference librarian more than 50 years ago, it was a big deal when our library got its second electric typewriter. Since then, we've seen public libraries become a destination for people of all ages, to use computers, to take programs, collaborate on projects, to study, and of course, to just sit and read a good book. When we think about the population of Allen County... Thanks, Ben, for sharing that article in this morning's paper. It's no surprise to you that it's grown over the past 20 years. You only need to look at traffic on the streets, new housing developments being built, or the demand for more schools, to know that people are moving to Allen County. Why? Because they see it as a desirable place to live, work, and in many cases, raise a family. And all the projections we've seen indicate that this trend will continue.
So in addition to library service evolution and the population trends in Allen County, another factor regarding doing a facilities master plan is the current facility infrastructure. This is a chart that maps out the ages of all the current facilities, and it shows that the current facility infrastructure was really built over three waves of construction. In the late '60s, early '70s, there, in addition to the main library, there were four branches: Wayndale, Shawnee, Hessen Castle, and Little Turtle occupied a former Kroger grocery store that I just learned, thanks to Kurt, was actually constructed in 1955. And turns out, grocery stores make great libraries. They're tall, simple building structures, flexible, and Little Turtle is an example of that. In 1990, there was a mini-building boom, which saw Aboyt, DuPont, and Tecumseh enter the system. But I think most of you are aware, in the early 2000s is when the system-wide upgrade really built the remainder of the system, including the municipalities outside of Fort Wayne, to the system as it was today, as it sits today. That included six new locations and upgrades to all of the existing locations except Aboyt and DuPont, which were built in 1990, and then DuPont upgraded in 1996. We'll talk more about those when we get to the individual branches. So the process we went through has been going on for a number of months, and again, designed consistent with the Board's commitment to deep engagement with staff and invitation to the community to participate. We started by getting to know the libraries firsthand through the eyes of the frontline staff and branch managers. We visited all locations in person and heard from the branch managers how they see their facilities serving the communities today. We invited all staff members to provide their opinions in an online survey. And then we followed it up with targeted sessions to get more direct feedback and how the facility responds, facilities may respond to strategic service priorities. We had a total of 10 community focus groups, and we gained input from a range of stakeholders, including program partners, elected officials, and different resident groups. Carson oversaw a survey specific to technology, and then oversaw three visioning sessions that will help shape the recommendations around technology moving forward. And in July, we facilitated five community sessions that were open to all, and also invited all county residents to participate in an online survey. Similar to Ben and Susan's comments at the outset, I want to reiterate that the feedback we have received matters, and it has shaped what we're going to share today, and will continue to shape the scenarios we help outline in the future moving forward. It's invaluable to get this community input and reiterate that the process has been designed and will continue to gain this input. So let's look at the facilities today. So this is a map showing the locations of the 14 public facility outlets as they exist today. And I want to highlight that there's a very important building that does not appear on this map, in DeSalle, which houses essential functions that make the library work, and including the awesome ARS, the audio-reading services, which has an international audience. And the only reason it's left off this map is our focus was on the public-facing facilities where public services are delivered. And this map helps us understand the distances between facilities today in a real way. DeSalle occupies a space in the north-central part of the city, and it is only excluded from this map because it doesn't have public service. So what we're going to do is we're going to talk about each location individually, in brief. And I'm going to spend a bit of time on Aboyt, mostly just to share with you what each of these pages represents, and talk about what the details and the data that's on these pages. I will also reiterate at this point that all of these presentations, this presentation will be available online for all to view at their own pace after this meeting tomorrow. So in the upper-left of every page, there is basic data, name, address, age of the building, square footage, site size, and parking. Below that is a county map that locates the building in context. Next to that is an aerial, and the orange dashed line represents the property limits, which helps us understand how a property may allow for expansion, and also maybe limit expansion. In the lower-right is a summary of key findings from current conditions. And I want to just share that this is a high-level summary. There will be more detail in the final report in several months from now, but this is not a comprehensive narrative, but it does represent input from staff, our own observations, but is also shaped by staff and what we heard from the community. So these bullets are what we heard from you, not just what we saw and what we think. And the upper-right is important. It's a summary of four key factors that allow us to understand what the existing property is capable of, and how well it may support the long-term needs of the community and the goals of the library. It helps us understand the potential investments needed, and how effectively those investments may lead to better, more equitable library services in a given location. So, Aboyt specifically, it is built in 1990. It has the longest time since any major capital improvements. It sits on a busy access road, but I would say a little bit off of what would be the main thoroughfare, Jefferson Boulevard. So it's visible locally, but not visible from the major thoroughfare. The overall building condition, we classified as poor. The mechanical systems are aging. The exterior building envelope is showing its signs of age. There is some settling happening, and these help contribute to a classification of poor in this particular location. The site is limited. It does not allow for future expansion. Relatively speaking, 2.2 acres is large for most of your other locations. But peculiar, too, this particular site is much of that property is wooded and ravined, so that we can't expand the building into much of this surrounding property. And this leads us to conclude that this building, with its current usage, it is not currently meeting the current usage demands today. This is one of the busiest branches in the system, highly used, and I think that's a direct line correlation to the great population growth in southwest Allen County. But this site would not, in its current state, allow for the 10-year usage demands we can anticipate. So DuPont, again, built originally 1990, expanded 1996, on a tight site, great location, highly visible, a DuPont Road. But the site is limiting. The site acreage is relatively small and close to the building. This, similar to Aboyt, is the highest circulating branch. It's very busy, and the current facility is not keeping up with the demands of the current usage. The building, and particularly mechanical systems, are aging, and some of the exterior facade is aging in a way that leads us to also classify that the overall condition of this building is poor. The site really doesn't allow for any expansion. The parking is already undersized. And this leads us to conclude that this site would not allow us to meet the 10-year demands for this location. Georgetown, another, this is actually, I think, the most visited branch, or the highest-circling branch. Is that accurate? But another very busy branch, and it is not currently adequate for the demands it's seeing today. Built in 2004, so the building, relatively speaking, is in good condition. Similar to the previous two branches, the site property lines are very close to the building, which doesn't allow for any real meaningful future expansion to meet future demands. And this leads us to conclude that this property does not also have, provided us the opportunity for renovation or expansion, to meet the projected 10-year demands. Grable. This is the smallest of the branches, again, in the northern tier, built in 2005. This is also experiencing high usage from a lot of the population growth happening in the northern tier of the city. So this is feeling a bit too small for the usage it's already experiencing. But being one of the newer buildings, it's in relatively good condition. The site, atypically for a lot of the properties, does allow for expansion. The available space north of the parking could allow the parking to expand to the north, and the building could expand into the current parking lot. So in this particular case, we do see that Grable offers an opportunity for renovation expansion to meet the 10-year demand looking ahead. Hessen Castle, another building with roots back to the early 1970s, just under 12,000 square feet. It is currently sized appropriate to the usage that it's seeing. However, the building is in poor condition. There's, in particular, some masonry concerns on the exterior, but it's showing signs of age. Those original roots back to 1970s, in some ways, are overtaking the benefits of the renovation that it experienced in 2004. However, this site does allow for some targeted expansion. There is a little bit of room around the perimeter of Hessen Castle. One of the benefits of the building, in spite of some of the challenges, is that it's relatively simple. So additions around the perimeter of Hessen Castle are possible. So there is an option for us to recognize that a development and an expansion of this property could possibly meet the 10-year demands in Hessen Castle. So in Little Turtle, simple, straightforward plan, a building on the grocery store roots. The building, from a size standpoint, is adequately sized to serve its current demands. In spite of some of the origins of the building dating back to the '50s, relatively speaking, it's in good condition, or decent condition. This site would allow for some expansion. It would displace some parking, but again, unlike some of the other branches, there is ample parking for a building by comparison. There isn't much green space, but you could expand the building if the future demanded that. And that leads us to say that, given the usage demands and the site opportunities, a renovation could meet the 10-year service demands here. Monroeville, this wins for the smallest site, and it's the third smallest building in southeast Allen County. It is adequately sized. The population, it's sort of doing a lot of mighty things out of a small space, but adequately sized for the population it serves. Being one of the newer buildings, it is still in adequate condition. The site does not allow for meaningful expansion. However, at this point, we don't see a projected demand to expand the building, so targeted renovations could satisfy the demand over the next 10 years. New Haven, another one of the buildings built in the early 2000s. It is adequately sized for the demands that it is seeing today in terms of usage. The building is overall in adequate condition. The site would allow for some modest expansion. For those who drive by this building, it looks like there's a lot of room on the Lincoln Highway side. The property line, however, is, allows for a pretty large right-of-way on Lincoln Highway, but there still could be some modest expansions if that demand was there. And in this case, between targeted renovations and some potential expansions, we believe the site could accommodate the 10-year projected growth. So Pontiac, well-placed in the neighborhood, again, one of the newer branches. It is adequately sized for the population and the demands that we're seeing today. The building is in adequate to good condition. The site could allow for some expansion. The building shape, the geometry, is a bit complex, but it could expand a bit towards the parking lot. And we do believe, in this case, that a renovation and/or expansion could meet the 10-year service demand. One of the things that we'd want to work on is the distance from parking to the front door, which we know is a hike, particularly for those with mobility challenges. Shawnee, another one on the south part of the city, built in 1970s, on a relatively small site, about 11,000 square feet. The square footage today is adequately sized for the usage demands that the building sees. The building, I would say, is unique architecturally in the system. It is the only building that is buried on all four sides, and that does present some access challenges, requiring people to descend a set of stairs or a long ramp to get down. And that is a unique factor in the Shawnee location. In that case, the site, we don't see allowing for future expansion. I'd say more accurately, the architecture of the existing building prohibits future expansion in ways the investment made to try to expand the building and its current condition... condition would not mitigate the challenges that the existing building presents just to access the front door. So in this case, we're led to say that the current location doesn't allow us to meet what we see as the projected need over the next 10 years. In Tecumseh, back on the north part of the city, again, another building that occupied a retail space. This one is older retail space, but expanded. Ultimately occupied as a library in 1990s. This is adequately sized, a good walkable neighborhood, well-placed. Relatively speaking, the building's in decent condition. The site would allow for some modest expansion, although we would hate to see the pollinator garden get disrupted if we do that. But there is some capacity for a modest expansion. And we do believe that this site would allow us to meet the 10-year projected demand. Wayne Dale, the largest, outside of Maine, the largest site. Again, one of the buildings built in the early 70s. It is adequately sized to meet current demands. It is on a nice site on a thoroughfare. In spite of the age, relatively speaking, it's in good condition, although I say it's a little bit balanced. The east side is in good condition, the west side with the staff and meeting space need a little TLC, so it balances out sort of mid-range. But the site does allow for expansion. Similar to Graybel, there's expandability on the north side of the parking. The building could expand into the current north parking. And therefore, we see this site as viable to be renovated to meet the 10-year demand. And Woodburn, another of the smaller regional libraries, this one in northeast Allen County, one of the newer buildings built in 2003. It is adequately sized to meet the demands that it's currently experiencing. Like a lot of the other new buildings, it's in adequate shape. This site would actually allow for ample expansion should the need arise. And we believe that renovations and/or expansions would allow us to meet the 10-year demand. And the last building we'll touch on from existing conditions is Maine. Certainly adequately sized to meet the demands. It has unique demands, I would say, different than the community libraries that we've talked about up until this point. It had an arc from 1968 to an expansion in the 70s to the big expansion in 2007. Total of 367,000 square feet, great location, central to the city. The building remains in good condition. The site doesn't allow for meaningful expansion, but this is a building whose needs are less about expansion and they're more about potential internal reorganization and qualitative improvements to allow for, say, improvements to the echo people experience in the Great Hall and navigability with some potential reconfigurations of departments to allow for a more continuous nonfiction and reference collection that might also allow for a better navigation of books. So now that we've looked at them individually, we're going to talk about the system collectively and put this back in the context of the overall system. Because what the system does is each building was developed and built logical to the moment in time that it was created. As we've seen and even as Ben referenced the article this morning, Allen County has continued to evolve. And over the last 25 years, you know, all of you have seen this evolution happen. The physical infrastructure of the Allen County Public Library has not had the opportunity to keep pace, but we have the opportunity to talk about what that might look like now. The other thing, just as a reference point, the total square footage of public-facing space or public-facing buildings in the system is 525,000 square feet. Without Maine, it's about 158,000 square feet. We'll reference those numbers in a bit as we talk about some additions. So some of the evolution is population-based. This map is a high-level representation of the high-growth areas of Allen County. I think, again, all of you are aware, you know, Allen County is growing. I think like everywhere, it's not growing evenly across the entire geography. High-growth areas are on the northern tier and in the southwest. And as these blue ovals represent, these high-growth areas are currently served by relatively few branches and those branches are relatively old. Georgetown falls into this category. It's adjacent to that similar north-tier growth area. One of the things that Georgetown has experienced more than any of the other branches is the more localized geography where the schools in the area really fill the building over capacity on a daily basis. But even without that, Georgetown is sort of experiencing that northern-tier growth. And by comparison, in the south part of Fort Wayne, the population is not currently seeing growth mode, but the historic development of the city sees a density of libraries and a density of libraries that are aging to serve this population. So we're going to focus on some options for how the system might be reconfigured. And we zoom in, we're going to start with the north and then we're going to talk about the south, two options for each. And the reason we're zooming in is just so we can see the data branch by branch in each location. So in the north, one recommendation is that we sell the DuPont property. It can't be expanded. It can't be expanded in its current location and it's not adequate to serve the community and the demands of the northern-tier population growth. So in the northwest part of the county, we're suggesting building a minimum 10,000-square-foot branch built on a site to expand, anticipate expansion, and build towards that anticipated continued future growth. Rather than replace a branch at the same location as DuPont, we have the opportunity to redistribute some of the locations, equalize the distance traveled between the branches located in the northern tier, and talk about building a 25,000 to 30,000-square-foot branch in north-central Fort Wayne. Now, just to put that in context, the combination of a 25,000 to 30,000-square-foot branch and a minimum 10,000-square-foot branch would double the total square footage over what DuPont currently offers the community in the northern tier in that area. And a 25,000 to 30,000-square-foot branch seems large, but when designed efficiently, it can accommodate the goals that we're hearing from patrons and the community in terms of books and collections, but also accommodate some of the other things that June will talk about in a minute that new branches want to have and what we heard from your community. But they don't necessarily need to, based on a building and designing efficiently, they don't necessarily need to increase the operating cost significantly. But we see larger branches that allow you to serve your community better in these locations. Along the northern tier, also in Graybel, given that this location can expand, we see expanding the building and renovating it in place so that we would get a total of 12,000 square feet up from the current 8,000 square feet that exist there today. And up near Leo Cedarville and on the northern tier, this is another branch that's seeing a lot of excess usage beyond its current capacity. Little Turtle in Tecumseh, serving the north part of the city, we think targeted, smart renovations will allow us to meet the current and anticipated demands over the next 10 years. And skipping over to Woodburn for a moment before landing on Georgetown, again, the size is adequate. It needs some upgrades and some smart reconfiguration on the inside, some systems replacement as we look out over 10 years, but we don't need to expand that location at present. So Georgetown, one option for Georgetown, because the building is in relatively good shape, is we could do a full renovation of Georgetown to improve its functionality and service for the community and peel off that major demand for services by building somewhere in the neighborhood or perhaps building in a storefront, a space that would be focused on teen and technology so that that target demographic that currently overflows in the building would have a purpose-built, age-specific space that would allow Georgetown to flourish on its own and the teens to flourish on their own, separating those two populations in a helpful way, in a meaningful way. So a second option on the northern tier is really focused on Georgetown. The other branches would be, as we recommended on the last slide, an alternative to building a second location adjacent to Georgetown would be similar to north-central and northwest. We would focus on a new 25,000 to 30,000-square-foot building that would achieve the goals of that community and for the projected 10-year future. And this would be about a 30% increase over the current Georgetown square footage. So now let's talk about South Allen County. So starting on the southwest, similar to the northwest, we see the opportunity to sell the Aboyt property and build a 25,000 to 30,000-square-foot branch that would achieve the same goals as we talked about for the residents of the north. And by the way, these green ovals don't represent any specific location. This allows us to target a geography that we know has need. But the long-term plan would be that those would be in collaboration, in conversation with the community, should the community agree that new locations are warranted as we do, that that would be an ongoing dialogue to find the right spot. But in Aboyt area, we would have a new branch and that that square footage would double the current square footage of the current Aboyt branch. In the southern tier, we have three of the oldest buildings. Two of the buildings happen to also be expandable, that's sort of a unique attribute on some of the older buildings on your site. So as the consultants, we are not recommending continued investments in the Shawnee property given the challenges of making that an equitable place to deliver services compared to the other locations. Just the existing elevation change, the investment wouldn't mitigate the challenges that the building presents. So to provide services in the south part of the city, one option would be to expand Wayndale and expand Hessen Castle in place. The total of those two buildings would equal 40,000 square feet, which would be a 10% increase in total square footage in the south part of the city. We'll talk about another option in a minute. In Pontiac and New Haven, similar to Tecumseh on the north and Little Turtle, these buildings are adequately sized for the needs that we see moving forward. Targeted, smart renovations would allow us to meet the 10-year demand. And in Monroeville, similar to Woodburn, we see this as the square footage is adequate, but we would need renovations to make it meet the 10-year demands. So another option in the southern part of the county is around the southeast Fort Wayne area. And similar to the other places we've talked about in the northwest, in the southwest, that Hessen Castle and Shawnee being two of the older buildings and increasingly expensive to maintain, we could sell those properties and build a new 25,000 to 30,000-square-foot branch properly located to serve this community in ways that frankly this community deserves and every community deserves. And this would represent, again, about a 15 or 20% increase in total square footage of public library service delivery to southeast Fort Wayne over the combination of Shawnee and Hessen Castle today. So just zooming back out a bit to show what these two options look like, again, total of existing square footage total in the system is 525,000 square feet. Option A would add about 50,000 square feet of new public library service space as currently proposed. And that's about a 30% increase in public library service if we don't count the main square footage. So we think of the 158,000 square feet of total library square footage in the system today, 50,000 represents about a 30% jump. And then summary option B shows the combination of option around Georgetown and the option around Hessen Castle and Shawnee, which would have five new locations, and shows a bit how the distribution of facilities might better align with the current arc of growth that's happening in Allen County today. So, that was a lot to take in. I think we want to have June tell us a little bit about what we want to achieve in these library facilities.
Thanks, Rick. As we thought about the future, especially the future of your library buildings, we discussed what this plan is intended to do. What do we hope it will accomplish? What's the big idea? And you can see it here on your screen. We want to build upon a foundation of welcoming and engaging places for all ages where lifelong learning, discovery, and personal service thrive and create an even more patron-friendly environment at all locations. With that in mind, as everyone's been mentioning, we had a number of conversations with your community and with staff. And what did we hear? Well, we heard loud and clear, showcase the books, arrange them in an orderly fashion on shelves that we can actually reach, have signage to help us find our way around, create displays to highlight books that might catch our interest so that we go home with even more wonderful books than we expected. We also heard that meeting spaces were important, spaces for small groups and for large groups, and enough of them so more than one meeting or gathering could happen at the same time. And beautiful spaces where everyone in the community was welcome. So what might that mean for children and teens? Well, during those conversations, we showed staff and the community residents a number of images, not recommendations, but images that were intended to spark conversation. We expected they would like some of them and we expected they wouldn't like others, but we didn't know which were which. So the images you're going to be seeing on the next few slides are things that resonated with library staff and with community residents. And again, they're only intended to be illustrative. So, children and teens. What do this space need? Well, of course it needs books. Books to foster their love of reading and learning and to help them succeed in school. And shelving suited to those books or media, such as the book bins you can see in the upper right-hand corner, and lower shelving so children can safely reach the books they want. Comfortable chairs and tables of different sizes. I think we could all agree that a chair that's wonderful for a three-year-old probably isn't going to be very comfortable for grandma or grandpa when they're visiting. It's also important to have spaces for children and teens that are away from the quiet areas of the building so that everyone can enjoy their visit. In these new larger branches that Rick's been describing, there may be some things that we couldn't include in the smaller branches now. Perhaps a family restroom, perhaps stroller parking so that when people come to story hours, there's a space to put all those wonderful double-sized buggies. And maybe even a specially-sized enclosed, perhaps, area for teens. Now what about adults? Well, ideally, they'd be away from the noisier, active parts of the building. There'd be comfortable chairs, perhaps by a window, where one could read a book, sit and chat with a friend, or even charge your phone or your device. Display areas that could highlight books and other materials on topics of local interest, perhaps timely topics like gardening in the spring or holiday crafts and cooking in the fall. And of course, the books and media arranged in a logical and intuitive manner with clear signage and enough space in the aisles that you aren't bumping into other patrons when you're browsing. We also heard that quiet spaces were important in terms of meeting and collaboration spaces. People want new irises to have multiple flexible spaces, spaces that can be used for various activities at different times of day, such as a preschool story program, a monthly book club, discussion group, an art class, maybe even a workshop on how to fly a drone, or a community meeting on a topic of local interest. We also heard it's important to have up-to-date technology. Computers with enough space that you could comfortably work, access to printers, copiers, scanners. Robust Wi-Fi was also mentioned, as well as plenty of devices, excuse me, outlets where people can charge their devices, and those meeting rooms with adequate technology to facilitate presentations and conversations, perhaps with people who aren't even in the room at the same time. Let's not forget the outside of the building. Clear exterior signage, welded accessible parking, well-maintained grounds redeemed essential for every library. And for the new branches, residents mentioned how wonderful it would be if the site could not only accommodate future expansion, but also be a venue for outdoor programs. And on the really big dream list, there was desire for a drive-up book drop or even drive-through service windows. These were seen as big pluses at any time with the day or night, but really convenient when the weather was bad or frankly, you just didn't have enough time to get two kids out of car seat. or frankly, when you just didn't have enough time to get two kids out of car seats and into the library, when all you wanted to do was return a few books. So, Rick, back to you.
Thanks, June. That's all great. Who wouldn't want all this amazing, new, wonderful space to visit? But, we have to understand how much that's going to cost. So, I'll talk a little bit about the combination of things that add up to some very conceptual estimate ranges. So, first of all, there's what we call hard costs. And these are the most tangible. These are the things that contractors build. Concrete, steel, walls, roofs, and the finishes, carpet, lights, ceilings, everything we can see and touch. But a big category of costs is what are referred to in the industry as soft costs. And these include all of the things that outfit the buildings to make them operate. That includes furniture, technology, that includes books, of course. But also includes a whole range of professional services, from architects to surveyors, environmental reports, soils engineers. It also includes things like permitting, insurance required for construction projects. And of course, contingencies to be responsible to help predict or mitigate against those things that remain unknown in the future. So, that's a big category of costs that can be anywhere from 35 to 45% of an overall project. And the last thing, of course, is escalation. As we move through time, we can anticipate that things will get more expensive. And for a project of this scale, we've anticipated that it would take three phases. In part, because we know that doing something this transformative, you wouldn't be able to take all of the buildings off. You wouldn't be able to stop library service for your community all at once. You could build some of the new buildings first. And we've estimated, conceptually, to be validated, that it would take three phases. And that timeframe would be about six to seven years to complete three phases of work. And so, what might that cost? So, the option A that you saw, which included four new branches, one of which was the new teen and tech center, three full renovations and expansions, seven renovations, and we're, we're holding an allowance for Maine to do targeted renovations. That option A would range from 95 to 102 million. Conceptual dollars, as estimated, as we understand it today. That leaves you with 15 total locations and about 50,000 square feet of added public space. Option B, the cost range for that, which includes five new locations, one renovation expansion in Grable, seven full renovations, and again, a targeted allowance for renovations at Maine, would range from estimated 108 to 115 million total. And that includes the escalation. I should note that these costs do not, do include escalation, but they don't yet include the cost to buy new property or the value of properties sold. So, that would be something that would be determined as projects become a reality in the future. And again, this all represents about a 30% expansion, in addition to all the wonderful amenities June talked about, about a 30% expansion in square footage, public service square footage across the system. So, I want to reiterate, all of, there's a lot of information to take in. I want to reiterate that this information will be available on the website, and you can review it in detail at your own pace. But I also want to reiterate that this by no means is a conclusion. This is a series of recommendations that are well-informed, and they're informed by the public. But they are not yet informed with the understanding of what might be possible, or what's recommended. So, this isn't a conclusion, this is an invitation for dialogue. And what I show on the screen here is a companion document that will also be available on the website that outlines with just a little bit more detail what we've talked about tonight, and also what we're going to talk about in just a minute. And in the spirit of defining what that invitation for dialogue means, I want to invite Susan to take the mic again.
Thank you so much, Rick and June. To speak more about the fiscal implications of these potential projects, I'd like to invite our chief financial officer, Dave Sedestrom, to say a few words.
Thank you, Susan. Obviously, given the size of the options being considered, it's going to be necessary for the ACPL to seek financing through the issuance of bonds. And those bonds will likely require a voter referendum, and so we'll be preparing for that. Obviously, until final decisions are made on what these options will include and, and what we're going to do, we won't know exactly how much we're going to finance. But one important thing to note is that, you know, you probably get tired of me every month talking about staying within budget lines, but your actions have, in the diligence in keeping costs low, have allowed us to build up significant reserves that we're going to be able to apply to these projects. They are in the Library Improvement Reserve Fund, the Rainy Day Fund, and the General Fund. And at present, we would see at least $21 million being able to be put forth toward these projects in whatever fashion you would seem necessary. So, you know, we have a lot of options here, and, and there's going to be a lot of recommendations that we'll need to look at. One of the main things, just to briefly talk about, is I know Rick mentioned about operating costs and the different things that will impact that. As he mentioned, there's, it's really going to depend on the final selection of what we choose. But as we've gone through this process, we're very confident that whatever options you choose and whatever building takes place, we're going to be able to manage that within the current general fund budget. And it will not be placing our operating budget in any type of problematic situation. So, that was one good thing, is we've gone through this, what we've found. So, just briefly mentioning those two items, and I turn it back to Susan.
Thank you, Dave. We can't stress enough the importance of the community in this process. This is your library, this is going to be your plan, and we have multiple ways for you to engage over the next few months. And I'd like to invite our director of communications, Stephanie Smith, to talk about that more.
Good afternoon, everyone. I would just like to restate what several have already said here today, that this plan is not final. We are presenting options and recommendations for our buildings moving forward. We want your feedback. This is your library. Our community is very passionate about this library system. They support it very generously. And they have a lot of thoughts about how the library should, should function and operate. And that's only fitting, because again, this is your library. So, there are several ways in which you can be a part of this process as we move forward in the months to come. The simplest thing, take our survey. That will go live tomorrow. It'll be located on the banner of ACPL's homepage. It'll be available in both English and Spanish. If you use the library's public computers, it will also be a pop-up option when you log in. So, we're going to make it very easy for you to participate in this survey. Also, now that you have heard the initial recommendations, the report will be available on the website tomorrow, again, in the banner, that direct link. So, go read through it. Figure out what, what do you want to know more about? What do you think about it? On Monday, January 10th, you will have the ability to participate in a livestream session, which will be hosted by Susan. It will include Rick and June, and will be moderated by Kent Castleman. So, that will be your opportunity to, again, learn more. If there are people who are not here today, or are not watching the livestream, and you think they should be participating, invite them to register to participate in that livestream. They'll not only get more information, but have the opportunity to ask questions and offer feedback. Also, we will have open houses at five different locations over the next month or so. Those will be held at Georgetown, Aboyt, Grable, DuPont, and Shawnee. However, the conversation will not be limited to the branch at which the open house is held, because we're going to approach this on a regional basis. So, for example, the Georgetown Open House will also include information and staff members from surrounding branches such as Tecumseh and New Haven. So, whatever your favorite branch is, there'll be an opportunity for you to attend an open house and learn more, and talk with staff, and ask more questions. Finally, on Monday afternoon, we'll be launching a dedicated website for this process. And the URL for that is youracpl.org. And again, that was very intentional, because this is your library. We want you to be involved in this process. That website will be the hub of information for the entire building process. So, there will be links to the open houses to register. There'll be the survey located there. There'll be the frequently asked questions document, which will be updated frequently, and it'll be noted by date when that document was last updated. Also, there'll be different videos. So, this particular sessions video will be posted there. The January 10th livestream video will be posted there after the event. That is your go-to place to find out information and also ask questions. But again, the most important thing you can do is ask the questions. Share your feedback, and talk to your friends and neighbors. Because again, our community loves the library. This is your library, and we want you to continue to be involved in this process of making our library system even better for today, but also for the years to come.
Thank you, Stephanie. And all of this data and feedback we receive over these next few weeks and months, this will be given to our consultants, and it will inform and be incorporated into the final report. Now, I'd like to turn it over to our esteemed chair of the Capital Projects Committee, Marty Seifert.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Again, thank you, everyone here in attendance. I appreciate seeing the people who are from our community have come to watch. Thank you to anybody listening livestream. I'm not quite sure what our numbers are on that. But I also want to thank anyone who listens to it later for taking your interest in the library. It's really important to all of us at this table and in this room, because the library is really a treasure of our community. And I want to make sure that we all understand, this is a really significant report. This is trying to guide our library into the mid-21st century. As I've looked at this, as we've gone through this project, this is thinking for the long term. This reminds me of the story of the person who plants that acorn, because he wants to have that mighty oak grown, even though he's probably never going to see it when it's grown. And that's really what we're trying to do here, is really treasure this library, but also guide it into the mid-21st century for all of us. As Rick said, it's a lot of information that we just gave. There's a lot of good information that's going to be on the website. Ask you, please, look it over, ask us questions. As we discuss our options as a community, it's important to remember all of us have that mutual goal of shepherding and moving this system, which is really one of the best systems in the country, forward for all of our children and our grandchildren as we move forward here, and all the new members of Allen County that apparently are going to be moving in, as we've been hearing about over the last few years. So, just a little personal note, the library, this library and libraries in general have always been really special to me. I think most of the staff here and people on the board know, I use this library a lot. I've been using different branches of this library system ever since I moved back here back in 1992. I think I have about 50 things checked out right now, and I've checked out thousands over the years. And as Susan knows, I've paid quite a bit in overdue fines over those years as well. In those 30 years since, since I started using this library, and the 10 years I've been on this board, I have always been astounded, amazed by everything that we do. I'm sure there's still many things I'm not even aware of that our library system is doing for our community. And I've always really truly appreciated the enthusiasm of everyone who works here and at this library, both for the community, for our collection, and for the programs and services we provide. So, Ben stated it, this has been years in the making. Our goal is to be transparent and open. As we move forward, consider all of these options. We want to hear from you. Stephanie has told you the various things that we have up on, available. Kent is going to be leading our session on Monday. Kent, do you have anything you want to let people know how to get onto that?
Yeah, that information will be posted on the, the library's website. There's also going to be some special communications that are going out to all cardholders as well, informing people of the links and how to connect into that. It is 100% virtual, so we'll be joining from our homes, and staff will be joining from their offices that are on. And, you know, the goal of this is to provide that, that feedback. There'll be opportunities right in the livestream to be able to submit questions to be answered. And I will say, we might not have answers to all questions. I think it's really important, and we've, we've reiterated this several times, that this is a very high-level conceptual view. So, if somebody, if somebody sends in something and says, you know, what's going to be the color of the chairs in the DuPont branch? I mean, we're not to that level yet. You know, that's, that's going to be over the next several years that we have to define the details of all of these things. Right now, it's just really focusing on that high-level view of how do we meet the service demands with the population growth and the trends that we've seen in the county? And so, you know, keep that in mind if you're tuning in and submitting your questions, that, you know, we can answer some questions, but we don't have all the details yet. Because at this point, we've not hired an engineer to tell us what a specific branch might look like with an expansion. We have conceptual ideas, and, and that was Rick and June's goal, is to say if it went from a 10,000 branch to a 15,000 square foot branch, what conceptually could be added, and what would that, using some, using several sources, what would the estimated cost be to do that? That's, that's all we know at this point. It's, it's not those detail on that end of it. Those details will be coming, and as those details get flushed out, there'll be even more opportunities for people in their own neighborhoods to be able to feed in. Right now, it's, as we look at balancing the system and meeting the demands, how do we respond to that as a board? And how do we make those decisions to make sure that we're serving the wider community and the needs that are currently in front of us? But I'm excited, in a moderator role, I guess I have to moderate and throw the questions to people. It's going to be really hard for me, and try to answer them too, but, but I'll probably answer a few as well. But please, 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 join in and make this interactive, because, and it's from 7:00 to 9:00 on Monday, January 10th. And we'll stay on for that full two hours if we have enough people. If you can even chime in for 15 minutes or half hour, I think that the time that you're in it, it'll be valuable. For that, Rick will give an abbreviated presentation of what was given tonight. But just please join in, and please encourage everybody else to, to join in as well, and, and just submit questions.
All right, thank you, Kent. I'll just wrap up, once again, with thanks. Rick, June, Carson, I think have done a great job for us, and will continue to do a great job for us. I, again, I've always ve- very happy with the staff. Our executive director, Susan, Kim, Stephanie, and everyone here, I think has worked really hard to make this open and under, and go over the options, and to try to get community input, which all the entire board appreciates. And again, thank you all for joining us, and I think at this point, we are moving on to public comment. And I believe whoever's in charge of seeing if anybody signed in, or if Stephanie has the online, and wanted to do that.
Oh, Tony.
Tony, yes.
Susan, I put my comments about the restaurant, because we're along with the library. I think it's, what we need, not just for books, but we need to buy the, for our healthy, but we need to feed our bodies too, because, but we needed like the bistro cafe. I'm talking about not to free, for our healthy, not just for, for restaurants too. Like, we need like a cafe to feed our bodies, and have a bookstore inside the library. I need a bookstore inside, it used to be the original plan, like a long time ago, playing like a bookstore, and, and the old white body outdoor next, next to the outdoor door, and a patio, and outdoor cafe, indoor and outdoor cafe, because we need, and I, back to, put it back the way it used to be, like, way for, when Duncan Doinb was open, it was a nice place to have an indoor and outdoor place to eat. Because not just for, for reading books and stuff, activity, we need to have a place to eat too. Should have free, not just for the public, and, and the patrons, and the staff, and the, and the volunteers. We need to have a place to eat too, Susan, and Susan and everything. I know, I know you guys busy doing other things, but I think we need, I mean, I know why you're doing other, other renovations. We need to turn that place into a restaurant again, for bookstore, like a little tiny bookstore. I got Lincoln Museum store, a little, little small Lincoln store, Susan. I think we need to, to a restaurant, to our cafe, a bistro cafe again, so people can eat. So, in these nasty weather, we need to go out across the street, in these nasty weather like this, we can stay inside to eat, for you guys to have, you have to go out to eat, so the volunteers and the social security eat too. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
All right, thank you, Tony. Ben, was there anyone else signed up?
No one else has signed up, Stephanie?
Or, actually, somebody's standing up back there, I'm sorry. If you want to go ahead.
Oh, it's June.
And if you don't mind signing in afterwards, just so we have a record of who spoke, all right?
Okay, sure, sure. I didn't really think I'd ask you to say anything, but, just curious. I remember back in the early, 2002, we had, can you hear me?
Yeah, that's better.
2002, 2003 is when we moved out of here and went over and did all the renovation, and then we ended up, thank you, moving back in January of 2007. But 2002, we had this, you know, bond thing. We had to get signatures, and people against it had to get signatures, and so, sort of dueling there. I think the ones who supported it were young. so, sort of dueling there. I think the ones who supported it wore yellow t-shirts, and the others wore blue t-shirts, or something like that. But, anyway, we won, we got the bond. But I was sort of thinking that that price, comparing the price of this, you know, the two options, back then, this is like almost 20 years ago, I was thinking it was like 62, 65 million, maybe, for just the main library, and then 80 million for everything? Do you remember what it was?
It was 89 million.
89 for everything. Okay, yeah. So, you know, those price tags, now, almost 20 years later, isn't bad. Okay, that's all I want to say.
Thank you very much.
I think it's important, we didn't say that, Dave, too, but as of December, all of those bonds are 100% paid back. So there are no outstanding bonds. Yeah, clap for that, that's good. There are no outstanding bonds right now, or debt for the library, long-term debt for the library.
Yeah, so, anything that would be approved on these bonds would not be adding on to any additional debt service. It would be, you know, totally new, you know, serious.
I see someone else standing up, and just if you could remember, before you leave, if you could sign up, just let us know who was there speaking, since we are a public meeting, we're supposed to do that.
Okay. I just wanted to ask if the consultants had looked into incorporating alternate energy sources into the proposed buildings, if they come to fruition?
I can let him answer for that. I don't think we've, like Kent was saying, we haven't gone into those details. It's something, frankly, that's been on my mind, along with a couple of other things. But I guess I see that more when we get into the, the actually design process. As far as the actual cost, they're kind of a high-level concept, this is what it'd be to build it. I don't know, Rick, is that something that you can speak to at this point, or?
I'll just add on to what you said. I think the budgets that have been established did not get to the level of detail of like which specific engineering systems we might incorporate. However, the cost trends that led to the estimates would allow for multiple systems to be considered, once the details are available for us to do so.
And when you say multiple systems, for us not in the biz, you mean different alternative energy sources?
You could consider many different kinds of systems at each given location, depending on what the community feels is important, and our goals of the library at that time.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? All right, Stephanie, is there online that you'd like to add to us?
We only have one question in the livestream, that's from John, who was asking if there's a copy of the master plan for the public. And so, stating earlier, yes, there will be on the website tomorrow in our banner on the homepage. The PDF of the presentation will be available for the public.
All right. And the plan is, once the other website is up and running, everything will come, all the information will be there, and any new information will be there. And again, that is youracpl.org, right, Stephanie?
And that will go live on Monday afternoon. So for now, go to the library's regular website for all the implications.
Okay. Mr. President, I think I don't see any other public comment.
Thank you all for attending. Remember, this is a beginning, not an end. It's an exciting venture for all of us. It's reflective of the love that we have for the library within our community. If there is nothing else, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn. Second, we are adjourned. Thank you again. Be safe.